Well, thank you all. This is again the Board of Education meeting for 2020. We have been in closed session for the last hour. So Charlie, if you can call the roll.
Ms. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Roby? Mr. Roby?
There.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Present.
Mr. Kerberd?
Here. We have a quorum. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic
one nation, under God,
indivisible, with liberty
and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. All right. Moving on down to item three, communications. Nothing specific, Tom, just my comments?
Correct, sir.
All right, thank you. All right. So a few things, as this is our last Board of Education meeting before Christmas, I would like to, on behalf of the Board of Education and the administration, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a happy new year. Please celebrate carefully and appropriately. We hope to and look forward to seeing everyone back in school, health and safety, health and safe very soon. CDC video and guidance. Several community members have continued in emails to the Board of Ed to refer to a video in which the CDC Director, Robert Redfield, says that schools are safe and safe for kids to be in schools, et cetera. This may be true in some limited way without additional context, but as with everything, the context is critically important. Most especially, it is vital to remember that school districts do not exist on an island, or you could say in a vacuum, and need to consider their impact on the greater community. Later on this evening, when we talk further about our Return 20 Plan, we will share some additional information from Assistant Superintendent for Student Services Mina Griffith has put together relative to guidance from the CDC, and we'll be sharing that with the community again, because this is part of what's the very important guidance and information that we as a Board of Education and the administration have been using as we make to, we look to make decisions about reopening in-person learning and bringing kids back, and at the same time balancing that with the health and safety of our overall community. Relative also to this somewhat same issue, we've also heard from many of the emails that we receive from the community have referenced the lack of a plan for District 202 in regard to returning to in-person learning. And I would like to reiterate that we have had a plan since July to return students to school in small controlled groups when it is safe to do so. I know we have said this, I have said this on numerous occasions before, but I don't think it can be shared too often. And again, this plan called for us to start the year in remote, which we did, to monitor conditions for the first four to six weeks of the school year, which we did, when it, if it was deemed safe to start bringing students back in small groups, which we did, starting October 26th with our multi-need special education students, and then continue to bring back students every couple of weeks based on conditions for the remainder of getting all of our students back to in-person instruction. Now, we have taken an adaptive pause, like dozens of districts around us, both big and small, because the COVID-19 positivity rate is spiking, and but we fully intend to bring back all students as soon as it is safe to do so. So again, we had a plan, implemented the plan, have paused the plan. In fact, that's why we have asked families last week to fill out the education choice forms, so that we will know whether they intend for their students to return to in-person learning or to continue with remote learning when we are able to reengage with that next step of the plan. We will use that information to guide our staffing and other planning. You have every right to disagree with our plan. We can all do that in America, and that's perfectly fine, but claiming that we don't have a plan disregards the unbelievable amount of work that our staff has done and continues to do to what is in the best interests of our students, staff, families, district, and community. So again, just to reiterate, we've had a plan since last summer. We've implemented the plan, and we have simply paused the implementation of that plan to this point in time with full intentions of bringing kids back to in-person learning as soon as we deem it safe enough to do so. We all want kids back in in-person learning. Board of Education has continued to look at all of the information that's available to us, to hear all sides and all voices in this discussion, and made the decisions that we were elected to make on behalf of the community. All right, we have no student ambassadors this evening, so 4.01 board salutes. Do any of my board colleagues have any board salutes this evening? All right, hearing none. Tom, no special recognitions, correct?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are moving on down to item five, 5.01, public comment. So again, as we began to do at our last meeting in November, we are going to read some public comment into the public record for the meeting, as we have done dating all the way back to March, when we first started having these remote meetings. We welcome public comment and have received public comment via email. All of those have, since that time and to this day, continue to be shared with all of the board members, every board meeting. Now, what we have taken the additional step of sharing those public comments. With that, a couple of parameters. District 202 protocol and board policy is to allow up to two minutes per comment and up to 20 minutes total of public comment, subject to the board president's discretion. We have received for this meeting 66 public comments, and those date back to just after the November 23rd board meeting. Generally speaking, those fall into the categories of 58 in favor of returning to in-person learning, five in support of continuing with remote learning for now, and three that are about other individual topics. To avoid any suggestion of impropriety of editing, et cetera, Director of Community Relations Tom Hernandez will be reading the emails this evening in a timestamped order that they were received up till 5:00 PM today, which was the cutoff. He will read them word for word minus any appropriate redactions necessary to protect individual anonymity, and subject to the stated time limits for each comment and for public comment overall, as I stated earlier. All public comments will be posted on the district website as part of the information for this meeting, as we have also been doing this year, with appropriate redactions to remove personal email addresses and names or information identifying specific students or staff. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hernandez, and we can start whenever you're ready, sir.
All right. So first comment tonight is from Carrie Falgrin. Please advise if the district is going to uphold the bond restriction of no contact with children for the 202 parent indicted on child pornography charges in regards to e-learning, or are they going to wait until a child is violated to take action? Once that happens, will an apology be issued to all families if the district is aware of the possible harm that could be done and yet chose to allow it? This is a serious, ongoing, and separate issue from the Grand Prairie and Ira Jones porn hacking incidences, incidents that affected students there that cannot be unviolated. Next is from Lara Hamilton. As I grow more concerned every day about the mental health effects of remote learning on our students, I just want to make sure you have seen the two recommendations below from the CDC and Dr. Fauci. Dr. Fauci states the CDC is the ARM of public health recommendations, so shouldn't we be listening to them? I know mental health is very easy to ignore when you are not seeing the change in children, but I talked to friends weekly that state their child's mental health is being affected, their child is not the same kid, and some teens are even being admitted to Linden Oaks for psychological treatment. I think the school board needs to look at total health of the children if they are truly concerned about doing what is best for the children. And then she links to a video. Next is from Andrea Trabat. Another article that needs to be read. If New York City can open schools, then PSD 202 needs to get their act together and open schools. And then she links to another video. From Jackie DiLuigi Price. It is with utter disappointment and disgust that I write this email. I find the information of sexual acts performed online about our district without it being immediately addressed to the parents is unacceptable. The dismissive response shows you generally do not care and exposes the fact that District 202 does have the proper security measures in place. These children deserve a safe learning environment. You have not only taken away the ability for our children to learn in person, but now have subjected them to this type of incident, and it's not the first. We deserve to have a choice to allow our children to return to school. The fear of the virus can't be that bad if a staff person attends events with best buddies posing for pictures mask-free, along with the many teachers out and about celebrating and vacationing, but claim they fear the virus and can't return to the classroom. The biggest school district in the world, New York City, is making the return to in-person happen. So should we. Make a plan that allows for children of all ages to return by following the science, not the increase of cases from long-term care facilities and probable cases. Continuing to hide behind the computer is failing the district and students, which in return will cause significant impact to test scores and home values. I don't recall in years past, schools being shut down for the flu, so step up and do your job by getting these children back in the classroom. Next from Michelle Colby. As I sit here and type yet another email requesting a plan for in-person learning, our children are in the midst of missing yet another quarter of school. My family filled out the back-to-school form which stated there is no set return date. When will there be a return date? It also said District 202 is following the metrics. What exactly does that mean? What metrics? You have said you are short on teaching staff. Why exactly? Why aren't you hiring people that have applied and are qualified? They might not have the experience, but if it seems if you are staying with e-learning, there is no reason they can't sit on the Zoom meeting and learn it from the teacher. Also, why are you only planning to do two partial days? Why not five days? How is this even an option for these students that have missed so much already? Zoom, a non-secure platform you have chosen for this very large district, hackers, pedophiles, and other disruptive concerns. Why has there not been another school platform chosen for e-learning? I believe our tax dollars can offer, can afford better. Speaking of tax dollars, don't our taxes pay for the schools, the ones simply sitting empty day after day while the park districts, daycares, and all Chicagoland Catholic schools have been in session since the beginning of the year? How have they been safe, but District 202 is not? Why is there still no real plan after eight-plus months? Why? Why do the teachers have no, why do the teachers not have a choice to come back? I know many that want to be back, but for some reason can't. Is it the teachers' union? These teachers are working twice, if not three times as hard with e-learning. They are putting in longer hours with the students, getting less out of it. E-learning doesn't work for everyone. Parents with multiple kids in multiple grades, helping out with work and Zoom calls while they are working and handling household chores. The students are suffering mentally, emotionally, and socially, and even physically. And I believe that is the two minutes for Michelle Colby. Next is Jessica Benzing. When we moved to Plainfield 20 years ago, we did so based on our research of the District 202 schools. It was imperative to us that our child and future children receive the best education possible. Fast forward to today, five of my children have benefited from our decision and the care that District 202 has taken in supporting their educational journey. The road here has been anything but smooth, and after struggling with our middle son's classroom behavior for six years, he was placed into a sixth-grade class at one of our schools. As parents, we were distraught. We had no idea how to help him. He has always been a sweet boy, but he struggled in the classroom, and we didn't understand why. The day he was placed in a particular class seemed at the time like a dark, hopeless day, and as luck would have it, it was actually the beginning of the turn. This particular teacher put us at ease. She's been down this road many times with parents, sick with worry and fraught with stress and frustration. She immediately got to work establishing a connection with our son. She worked tirelessly with all of us to devise a custom plan for all of us. She observed him at his best and at his worst, and those observations led to discoveries of how to capitalize on his strengths in order to give him the confidence he needed to address his weaknesses. He'd never experienced that before, having always felt like the bad kid in every classroom. It made all the difference in the world. As the year went on, their child began to flourish. This teacher noticed that he was at his best when he felt helpful and useful, so she gave him some responsibilities. Those responsibilities meant something to their son, and he continued to flourish in his new environment. His behavior issues did not magically disappear overnight, but the dedication that this teacher showed him, her unwillingness to throw in the towel with him even when he pushed back, became the catalyst for his success today. This teacher believing in him and demonstrating that faith in his abilities and supporting him through times she knew would he would, he would be challenged, gave him the ability to begin believing in himself. He started working toward goals. He started to actively participate. Most days, again, no miracles were performed. He started to behave more like the boy we knew. Today, our son is graduated from high school and knee-deep in paramedic school and on his way to a career as a firefighter slash paramedic. He's still using the skills that that teacher instilled in him so many years ago, and it fills my heart with immense joy to know that other students and their families will continue to benefit from her experience, compassion, and wisdom. And that's the two minutes for Mrs. Benzing. Next up is from Annie Clutshus. I was talking to an educator friend of mine who reached out to me after seeing the Plainfield Patch article about the most recent Zoom porn incident, and he suggested I ask if the district purchased Zoom security as part of the remote learning plan. They use it in their district and states we should not have these issues if this security package was purchased. Additionally, I have discussed with other educator friends from neighboring districts and states the use of Google, of Googled Meets within classroom rather than Zoom as it is more secure. That's from Mrs. Clutshus. Next is from Tara Griffin. Every day, I see the enthusiasm for school fading away in my son. The line between school and home becomes blurred more and more as each day passes. The anxiety escalates week after week as he never seems to be able to separate the stress of remote learning and the safety and warmth of home, no matter how hard we try as parents. I am for choice to return to in-person, and I support in-person learning. Please don't let a student of PSD 202 be the next headline. And then she links to a story about a student shooting himself during a virtual class. Next is another email from Laura, Lara Hamilton. Do you hear us? Parents want their kids in school and not only two half-days per the week. Listen to the experts, CDC, and parents, and get the kids back in full-time school. Enough is enough. You cannot have your own agenda that doesn't take this into consideration. Do you know how much psychological and academic damage that is being done? The school board should do what is best for the students. If teachers don't agree, they can leave, and you can hire new graduates. Please care and make this happen. See the article below, which states, Dr. Anthony Fauci told ABCs this week last Sunday that in-person classes should be the default position. And then she links to that article. Next is a letter from Mike Manade. You and the school board have exceeded the legal authority granted to you as administrators and as a school board by the State of Illinois. As a local school board, you simply do not have the ability to involuntarily quarantine completely healthy students. The law is designed to keep contagious students isolated. Your policy is not only unprecedented, but illegal. Governor Pritzker knew that he lacked the legal authority to mandate such a quarantine, which is why he delegated the decision to local school boards, and why he has stated numerous times that the lockdowns do not apply to the schools. Of course, many schools around the state are open, as is their legal obligation. 105 ILCS 5/10-21.11 provides for the authority of local school boards related to infectious disease policies and issues. It states, quote, "Such policies and rules must include evaluation of students with a chronic infectious disease on an individual case-by-case basis," end quote. The illegal policies implemented by the District 202 school board are not based on individual cases of infection, but rather the prohibition of all students to attend school regardless of health status. In Illinois Administrative Code Title 77, Chapter 1, Subchapter K, Section 690.30, General Procedures for the Control of Communicable Diseases, it states, quote, "Except in an emergency, the occurrence of a case of communicable disease in a school, childcare facility, or college/university should not be considered a reason for closing the school, facility, or college/university." The only city, county, or state declaration of emergency related to COVID-19 was limited to the early days of the pandemic and has long since expired. District 202 is in violation of this Illinois code of procedures for schools. The students and parents of District 202 demand that the superintendent and Plainfield Community Consolidated School Board immediately cease their illegal actions and open all District 202 school facilities to in-person learning. Remote learning should be a choice, not an involuntary and illegal requirement of a school board that has exceeded its authority over students. It's time to free the kids of District 202 from their involuntary quarantine they have suffered since March. That's the two minutes for Mr. Manade. Next is from Tracy Small. Our family supports a return to in-person learning and opening schools for those that would like to send their child. You continue to say over and over that we will return, quote, "when it is safe to do so," end quote. And now, every day, I hear a new study or evidence that argues that it is safe for kids to be in school. CPS, Chicago Public Schools, has 300,000 more students than District 202 and is the largest district in the state, and they have set a return date for their students before we have. Set a firm date for our students to return to school. Your decisions regarding our children's futures are not acceptable. Thank you, Dan and Tracy Small. Next is from Cassie Clark. I am writing as a parent in the district. My children lost their uncle to COVID-19 this past spring. He had fallen on hard times, and my family took him having us live with us for two and a half years. He was more of an extra parent to my children. Because we saw how horrible this disease can be, we have been extremely vigilant. We have stayed home, worn masks, not seen family and friends. Even with all these precautions, my entire household tested positive this past week. We can only assume my husband brought it home from work, but we do not know for certain. My six-year-old was sent to the ER Saturday night because her body swelled up along with a rash developing all over her. She's home and quote-unquote "safe" right now, but has to be on steroids and allergies and medicines to keep those things mild. My husband and son have had quote-unquote "mild" symptoms, which are not very mild. I myself find it difficult to breathe at all times. I'm happy to report I am the only one with major breathing issues. I'm writing to share this because even though we've been very careful, the disease got us. Thank you for making the hard decisions to keep the schools closed. Thank you for prioritizing health and safety over the loud outcries of the few. I know people are angry and frustrated. You've all made the hard choice to care about the health of the students, staff, and families, and for that, I am thankful. I would not wish this disease on anyone. I do not plan on sending my children back into school anytime soon. The risks are too great. I just wanted to thank you for making these tough calls." Next, another email from Andrea Trabat. Here's another article that needs to be read and continues to happen to our youth. I pray this doesn't happen to one of our youths in the district, but if we continue with this remote learning, the chances have increased. These schools need to be open. When the district, what the district has done to our children is worse than the virus. And she links to a story about a main teen, main teen feeling isolated from restrictions committing suicide. Next is from Suzanne Janki. Remote learning does not work for my children. School is essential and needs to be in-person. Set a date and make plans to open schools fully in January, and keep the remote option for those who want it. The Elgin District, a bigger ship than us, has a plan to return all grades in January. Next is another email from Mike Manady. It is clear and evident the teachers' union is deciding the return to school, which is unfortunate, but what I want to table is the blatant failure by you all to honor the United States Bill of Rights. All students are entitled to an equal education, which our students have been denied. Being forced to remain remote by you has been a direct denial of that right. The students are receiving lesser education than other districts in the state of Illinois due to your decision-making. The students have been subjected to enough already. It is time to be leaders in the industry and stop being followers. Science has proved children in school are not quote-unquote "super-spreaders." The teachers' union vows to not return until they receive vaccines per a patch article that was published today. As a first responder, I know the importance of that vaccine, but I will not stand by and let the teachers' union determine when we return, especially since science has proved how little students actually spread the virus. The head of the most influential medical body in the country has stated students belong in school. When will it be enough? As a taxpayer who pays the salaries of you all and all the teachers, it's time you do something in the interest of the students and not the teachers. Science is on the students' side. You claim to be influenced by governmental agencies, local metrics, et cetera. Start listening to the national medical bodies. I urge you to stop denying our students their right to an equal education. I have contacted ACLU in regards to this blatant denial of rights. Please give these students a choice at education. You have not for one second thought about their well-being, only your own.
Two minutes remaining, Tom.
Okay, the last one is a, is from a group called 202 Choice, a group of parents called 202 Choice. Pardon me. And Mr. Kerber will speak more about this in a minute. They are responding to a response that was sent to them to their initial letter. Dear Mr. Kerber, the parents, quote-unquote, "as defined and referred to in our affidavit dated November 2nd are in receipt of your letter sent on November 24th. We are responding to your letter as concerned, frustrated, tired, loving, mindful, empathetic, and upset representatives and members of this Plainfield Community Consolidated School District 202 constituency. Feel free to share this letter with all members of the 202 School District Board for which you are currently present. Considering the parents have tried to reach out to the board by attending, emailing, live chatting, and calling with concerns regarding issues brought before this board in the past six months, including an in-classroom return plan, what the definition of "safe" is, inadequate IEP and 504 plan support services, lack of Zoom platform security, and many other issues, it is perplexing that you are acutely aware of how your decisions in these extraordinarily difficult times impact this district's stakeholders' lives. Overall, your response to our letter on November 16th and aforementioned affidavit is not acceptable. With regards to acts which have no legal foundation, please define the legislation, the case history, the governor's executive order number, or the date of the constituency vote which allows for e-learning to continue in this district. You are not able to because it does not exist. Therefore, the effort you are leading to continue to require this district's roughly 26,000 students to remain home is without merit and illegal. Given that this community assumed you reviewed the legality of your actions and found no actual legal support, we must conclude that you and your four peers previously mentioned must step down. Other outright illegal acts which have been documented by the parents in this district since our November 16th letter include violation of mandatory reporting laws with regards to a recent Zoom class at Ira Jones Middle School and numerous Open Comments Act violations which are currently being pursued by a team of attorneys on our behalf. You are correct that we are in fact circulating a petition to recall five board members, including yourself. As this has never been done in the state of Illinois, case law precedent falls to other states where it has been in fact successfully accomplished. Any elected official may be successfully recalled under our laws. We are moving forward in good faith and with all intentions of reclaiming our children's rightful education as defined in the mission statement of this district. In our opinion, the five current board members mentioned in our affidavit who are volunteers elected by the community have already quote-unquote "shirked" their duties and responsibilities to this community and the students and staff of this district. In fact, based on this board's actions or lack thereof, and due to the lack of credibility or substance with regards to the statistics and measures this district is using for a minimal return plan, in addition to the lack of legal substance behind this situation, we are quickly coming to the conclusion that the children of this district are being held hostage as pawns for political purposes. An alternative theory is that our children are being used as pawns for a contract negotiation with the teachers' union. It is possible both theories are accurate. Please see the attached for a list of 518 signatures compiled for purposes of our board member recall effort as of yesterday. Member recall effort as of yesterday, supporting a recall of the five Board members previously mentioned, signed the parents.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Appreciate your time and effort to read those this evening. And as always, appreciate, again, everyone that took the time. Those that, again, were not read because of our time constraints have all been shared with the Board of Ed, all members of the Board of Ed, and have been read accordingly. So, and to address and put in some context, the last piece that Mr. Hernandez read, did want to give some context to that. Several weeks ago, myself as President of the Board of Ed and the district administration received a letter from this group that addressed some of the same concerns that were mentioned in this letter and this follow-up letter. So again, to give context to that, I wanted to share with the community the letter that we created and sent to this group in response to their initial email. So their initial letter to us. So again, this is our response to them, which then prompted the most recent response that Mr. Hernandez just read. So, Dear Mrs. Seebach, the Board of Education is in receipt of your letter you sent on November 16, 2020, along with the PowerPoint and draft affidavits related to your intent to circulate a petition for recall of certain Board members. I am responding to your letter as President of the Board. I have copied this letter to the other parents listed on the affidavits. Please know that the members of the Board are acutely aware of how our decisions in this extraordinarily difficult times impact the lives of our students, staff, and community, and especially the immediate health, safety, and education of our students. However, the course of action outlined in your letter is not permitted by law, and your pressure tactics will not be successful. Your initial demand in the letter appears to be that five Board members resign, so this may trigger an immediate special election for replacement. Pursuant to the Illinois School Code, resignations of Board members trigger vacancies that are filled first by the remaining Board members and then, if not timely done by the Board, by the Regional Superintendent of Schools. A special election is not triggered or called for under law, and it is misleading to suggest this is a solution for your concerns. Your PowerPoint and affidavits also indicate that you are intending to circulate a petition for recall of certain Board members. There is no legitimate process by which to recall Board members under the Illinois Constitution under statute. The citation in your affidavit to Article 3, Section 7B of the Illinois Constitution concerns only the recall of the Illinois Governor and is not applicable to School Board members. In fact, there is no provision in Illinois law for the recall of members of the Board of Education. Because we expected that you were proceeding in good faith, we called both the Will County and Kendall County election officials, who confirmed that no such affidavits have been filed, nor would they accept any such affidavits, as there is no mechanism under law to recall School Board members. Given that we assume you reviewed the legality of your proposed actions and found no actual legal support, we must then conclude that your intentions are to intimidate the Board and stir up unrest. Be assured that our Board members, who are volunteers elected by the community, have no intention of resigning or shirking our duties and responsibilities to this community and the students and staff of this district in the face of intimidation tactics or acts which have no legal foundation. In these extraordinarily difficult times, community members who seek to be leaders for change should be setting an example for our students on how to legally and in good faith tackle adversity and work together as a community. As we continue to be in the grips of this global pandemic, the Board members, in collaboration with our administration, teachers, parents, and community members, must balance all the competing concerns related to educating students during this time. We must consider the educational needs of students, the health and safety of our students and staff, and our finite resources. The Board must give considerable deference to guidance from public health officials, the experts regarding the very real and very serious health implications of our decisions. None of the decisions we make during this time are easy, but these decisions are entrusted to the Board, and we will make them in good faith and pursuant to our duties to the community, our students, and our staff. Sincerely, Kevin Kerber, Board President. So again, I hope that provides some additional context to the letter that Tom read into the public comment, as it was received as part of public comment. We wanted to honor that, and it did come in, in order that, again, it would have been read in the 20-minute time allotment. So again, hopefully that gives some additional clarification and understanding to the community of where that dialogue was coming from, as well as to the Board's position relative to what was shared in the letter. So once again, thank you, Tom. Appreciate your time this evening with that. All right, moving on to Item 6 is the Consent Agenda. Tonight we have three items. They will all be taken together, so I will cover all three at this time. 6.01 is Approval of Policies That Have Been on 30-Day Public Display. Policy 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure. Policy 2:265 Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure. And Policy 7:345 Protection of Student Personal Information Online. Consent Agenda Item 6.02 is Approval of the Regular Session Minutes of November 23, 2020. And Item 6.03 is Approval of the Certified and Non-Certified Personnel Agendas, both as presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie, call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes. Thank you very much. So we're going to take the committee reports in a different order than what is listed on the agenda. So we are going to go to, skip down to Item 8 for Action, Personnel, Policy, and Administration. Mrs. Drake?
Thanks, Kevin. The PPA Committee met this past Wednesday. The first thing that we had was our Community Relations Update, in which Tom Hernandez shared that the Community Relations Department has assisted in the Educational Choice Forums this month. They also published the new core newsletter, and they kicked off the 2020-2021 United Way Next on the agenda then is for me to seek approval of policies and to place on 30-day public display Policy 6:300 Graduation Requirements, Policy 6:340 Student Testing and Assessment Program, and Policy 7:300 Extracurricular Athletics. That is my motion.
Heather's second. Bob's second. Charlie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
And that was all for the meeting. It was a very quick, I think it was seven-minute meeting, so.
All right, thank you, Heather. Appreciate it. So Item 9 for Action, Curriculum and Technology Committee. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. We have three informational items that were discussed at the committee meeting last Wednesday. We want to thank the Committee for Cultural Compassy Update. They gave us a lot of information on what they're proposing for the district and the work they've put into at this point. Also, one of the students we heard from Plainfield North Ryan, want to thank him, and Michelle Shay, who's also guiding this committee. So again, thank them for their update. The second informational part was 9.03 Workbook Fees for the High School and for the Middle School for the 21-22 School Year. There would be no significant changes from this school year. So there is some changes on the increase with the cafeteria program, but otherwise the workbooks, fees were pretty much going to stay the same. And then Item 805, we got to hear from Dr. Rivera at Oxlade Middle School, Brian Sorge, Principal at Meadowview, Curtis Hudson from Charles Reed Elementary, and Vicki Foster from Thomas Jefferson, gave us an update on how their staff and students are doing with the remote learning and some of the progress that they and challenges that the staff and students have. And so we want to thank them for that update. Next month, January 20th is our next meeting at 6:00 PM. Approval of Resource Purchase, Resource 30-Day Display, Technology Update, Midyear Discipline, and we'll be hearing from the principals from JFK, Liberty, Eichelberger, and Crete Site. So that's the information that we heard from last Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Kerber.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that. All right, so now we will jump back up to Item 7 for Action, Site and Finance Committee, and I will turn it over to Mr. Cook. Dave, I think you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. The Site and Finance Committee also met last Wednesday on December 9. The committee is bringing nine items, eight items to the full Board for approval tonight. I will first start with the reading of the Treasury Report. There was a beginning cash and investment balance of $206,254,817.32. Revenue of $16,180,429.55. Expenses, the amount of $25,210,58.1 cent, leaving a cash and investment balance of $197,267,711.05. Moving on to 7.02, Approval of the Acceptance of the Treasury Report. That is my motion.
Dave's motion? Rod, was that you, Rod?
Yes.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
Moving on to 7.03, Approval of the Payment of Bills in the Amount of $3,133,734.61. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Second. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
7.04, Approval of the Resolution Providing for Tax Levy for the Year 2020. The public notice was published on December 1 of 2020 with a public hearing 6:30 PM tonight, December 14, 2020. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
Now, before I go on to the final five items that we're bringing to the Board, if there's any questions before we go through the approval process, just let me know, and we will have a discussion. So the next item that we're talking, we'll be talking about and looking for approval on is the school fees and high school workbook fees for the 2021-2022 school year. Is there any questions? If there's no questions, then we're moving on to 7.05, Approval of the School Fees and High School Workbook Fees for the 2021-2022 School Year. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
Next is the Airmark Amendment to the Agreement. Is there any questions from the Board? If there is any questions, we'll move on. 7.06, Approval for Airmark Amendment to the Agreement. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
Next is the Proven Contract Extension. Is there any questions? 7.07, Approval of Proven Contract Extension. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Bob's second. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
7.08, Approval of Acceptance of Donations as Submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
7.09, Approval of Disposal of Assets as Submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
As Mr. Kerber discussed earlier, we do have a PMA presentation tonight. As soon as our representative arrives, we will have that presentation. That is all from Site and Finance, Mr. Kerber.
All right, thank you, Dave. Appreciate that. So yeah, we will hold open Item 7.10, the PMA presentation, and we will share that our consultant from PMA that's presenting that presentation was at another school board meeting this evening as well. So he was feeling like he hopefully would be here by 8:30, so we'll go ahead and move on in the agenda and then move back to that item as he arrives and is available to join us. All right, so moving on down to Item 12 for Action Other. 12.01 is Approval of Resolution Authorizing Notice to Remedy for a Tenured Teacher. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob's motion?
Second.
Mike's second.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes. Thank you. Moving on down to Item 13 for Information, we don't have a Board of Education report tonight, so 13.3 is the Return 2021 Plan Update, and I will turn it over to Dr. Abel and his team for more information.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. As has become a standing informational item on our Board of Education agendas and meetings, an update on the Return 2021 Plan. Before I get into my lion's share of the report, I would like to ask Mrs. Griffith, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, to provide some background information from clarifications on information that we receive from the CDC or guidance that they provide for schools. So with that, Mrs. Griffith, please go ahead.
Thank you. So as Dr. Abel said, I'll be responding to several letters that have referred to Dr. Redfield recommending that schools open and that schools are considered to be the safest place for our students. First, it's important for the community to know that we consider the guidance and recommendations from several organizations, including the CDC, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and Will and Kendall County Health Departments. CDC has published a significant amount of information for districts to consider. As it relates to the CDC... As it relates to the CDC, we primarily refer to guidance around operating schools during COVID, reopening indicators to inform our decision-making, as well as cleaning and disinfection guidance. There's a misconception that the CDC is recommending schools to open. The CDC provides guidance to schools to assist with their decision-making process. And a straight quote from the CDC is, "When making decisions on when to open schools for in-person learning, it's important to understand the COVID transmission rate within the surrounding community in order to determine the possible risk of introduction and transmission of COVID within the school." According to Will County School Metrics, Will County, as well as Kendall County, are in warning for test positivity for new cases per 100,000, and we are considered at a substantial risk for community transmission. According to the CDC indicators and thresholds, these were created to assist schools in their decision-making process related to the reopening procedure. According to the CDC, when the statistics indicate a level of risk is higher in a community, schools should consider alternate learning models such as a hybrid model or remote learning. So there's actually three different indicators that the CDC suggests that school districts look at. The first is the number of new cases. According to Will County Statistics on December 11th, there were 594 cases per 100,000 in Will County. That places our county in the highest risk category, according to the CDC. For the CDC, schools are at the highest risk of transmission when the number of new cases per 100,000 is greater than 200. Again, we were at 594 cases, which was higher than the week prior. The second indicator that CDC recommends we look at is the positivity rate. The test positivity rate on Friday in Will County was 16.6%. That was the rolling positivity rate. For the CDC, schools are at the highest risk when the test positivity rate is greater than 10%. The last indicator are key mitigation strategies for schools to implement. This is the only indicator that schools have any specific control over. So this indicator looks at the district's ability to implement wearing of masks, social distancing, hand hygiene such as hand sanitizer, and having enough soap available for students, cleaning and disinfecting, and contact tracing. The last indicator, that third indicator, the district would be at low to moderate risk for introduction of COVID only if we implement a hybrid model. So I know the district has also received a lot of letters criticizing the hybrid model, which is what we are considering for second semester or for third quarter. And there's been a lot of questions as to why we are not doing a fully in-person educational model. Again, we consult information from the CDC as well as IDPH. And according to the CDC, the risk of spreading COVID in schools increases across the continuum from virtual remote learning to hybrid learning to full in-person learning. Even the hybrid model has a risk for spreading COVID. According to the CDC, there's more risk for spreading COVID when districts hold small in-person classes and groups stay together with the same teacher throughout the day. This is something that we would be able to implement at the elementary. Middle school and high school would have a higher risk even with a hybrid model because of the need to change classes. Schools are at the high-risk or the highest risk of spreading COVID-19 when students are fully in-person and when students mix between classes as they would at all levels. Another thing that we've been asked to consider is that the claim that children don't get sick and children don't spread COVID. Per the CDC, straight off their website, children can be infected with the virus that causes COVID. They can get sick, and they can spread the virus to others even if they don't have symptoms. It's accurate that the hospitalization rate for children is low. However, one in three children who were hospitalized with COVID were admitted to an intensive care unit. This is the same rate as adults. Also, the risk for teachers, administrators, and other staff in the school is expected to mirror that of other adults in the community if they contract COVID. According to the CDC, the counties and countries that have been successful with opening schools and have a low risk to school-aged children were areas with low community transmission. Right now, Will and Kendall County are considered in substantial risk of community transmission. So it's important that our district looks at all of the data and all of the information from the CDC. The last thing that the CDC asks us to do is to make this a community effort. According to the CDC, to enable schools to open and to remain open, it's important to correctly and consistently implement actions to slow the spread of COVID, not only inside a school, but also in the community. This means that students, families, teachers, school staff, and all community members have to take action to protect themselves and others where they live, work, learn, and play. This includes washing hands and using good hand hygiene, practice social distancing, limiting large gatherings, wearing a mask over our nose and mouth, and staying home when we're sick. In short, the CDC says that success in preventing the introduction and transmission of COVID in schools is directly connected and dependent upon preventing transmission in our community. That would be all that I have at this point, Dr. April.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Griffith. We felt it was important to provide some clarification on some of the confusion that is out there on recommendations or guidelines from the CDC and some things that are only partially explained or that type or incomplete information. So really, leading into the lion's share of my report, as we did first semester, we continue to collect information at this time and to be able to plot out a planned return in timelines. If you remember correctly, first semester, we did have a plan. We did announce timelines for a return to in-person learning. We've continued to collect information now for third or fourth quarter or second semester for a return for in-person learning. Again, that is our goal. That has been our goal all the way along. So far, the response as of about 3:30 today to our educational choice or parental intent form for third or fourth quarter for second semester show approximately anywhere between 51% or 58% of parents wish for their child to return to some form of in-person education. Those numbers fluctuate a little bit depending upon grade level. Younger students had a higher percentage of parents wishing for them to return to in-person up at the high school level. It bottomed out at about 51%. Now, we do, I will say, certainly remain cautiously optimistic for a return to in-person education and that that's going to happen during third quarter. But, you know, you gotta observe history, and history hopefully prevents mistakes or repeating of mistakes that have happened in the past. And COVID, if it's taught us anything, it's got to be how unpredictable and very difficult it is to assess any certainty on the virus. We need to continue, as Mrs. Griffith said, to remain vigilant, observe hand washing, observe distancing, observe masking, all of those at the community level. As we continue to see the positivity rate and the overall number of cases, at least in Illinois, in the county, to slightly decline, if we can keep that going, that momentum will carry us into an in-person return and being able to announce timelines and different groups of students being able to return. Currently, we are in remote learning, and we will stay in remote learning until the end of first semester. That date is January 15th. We'll continue to update our parents, students, and the community as appropriate and as quickly as allowable and prudent regarding a phase-in approach to in-person learning for second semester. We hope, I hope, to be able to provide some timelines at our January 11th Board of Education meeting or possibly sooner. Again, those timelines are always subject to the twists and turns and changes or rapid ascent of the positivity rate or of any of the other metrics that we use to assist us in making a decision on a return to in-person education. That would conclude my and our update on the return 2021 plan. Certainly, if board members have any questions, myself or any other member of our administrative team will be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you, Dr. April. We'll open it up if there are any questions from the board for the administration or any comments anyone wants to make regarding the current plans for the return 2021.
No.
All right, well, as always, the board is welcome and encouraged to continue to communicate with the administration on any questions that they have, as we again all do on a regular basis, to help get clarity and guide our individual thinking and decision-making on this. And I would also like to thank Dr. April and his administrative team for all their work that they have been putting in on creating the plan and moving forward with implementation of that plan as we have gone through this school year thus far and as we transition into 2021 and second semester and going forward. All right, I think I saw a note that our guest has joined us and is available. Is that correct? Tony, are we able to have the presentation?
Yes, yes, and Mr. Lewis from PMA and I are over in the conference room. So what I will do is, just for the sake of time, instead of having to try to set his laptop up on the network, I will do a brief introduction on what we'll talk about and then just pass my computer over to him with the presentation shared. We talked at our Site and Finance Committee meeting last week on how going forward for this school year and then for the next couple, giving our budget balance will require really three different efforts. Some borrowing, some looking at cost reduction, and some looking at increasing of revenue in ways that we can. Borrowing can be a little bit tricky because you want to be very responsible with what you're issuing when you're issuing it. But there is an opportunity in what we had looked at that we put about $5 million into our capital projects fund from our educational-based funding. That money could actually be put into the Ed Fund if we were to issue some working cash right now while interest rates are low in order to cover the capital projects that we have for the next couple of years. If we were to do this in a different way, we talked at Site and Finance about the possibility of cutting down the number of capital projects and postponing a lot of the work for a few years. But really, what that does is it leaves us in a position where we are doing kind of the bare minimum. A lot of painting, some HVAC work on boilers that only absolutely have to be done, and a lot of work that we know we need to do that we hadn't slotted into a year yet. You know, it's just there's more work than dollars right now. So this is trying to find that harmony. And in talking with Mr. Lewis from PMA, we kicked around a couple ideas, and he's here to pick a little bit more in-depth about what those options may be. So let me go ahead and share my screen here, and then I will pass the computer over. Is everybody able to see that?
Yes, Tony. Okay. All right.
Hello, everyone. So I'll begin the presentation by just giving you an update of what the municipal bond market has been doing so far this year. And then we'll look, take a snapshot of your current debt picture and then look at these scenarios that Tony was alluding to. So this shot here is an interest rate index chart. What you see graphed here are rates from this index and the one-year rate, the five-year rate, the 10, and the 20-year rate. This index consists of a market basket of AAA-rated bonds nationally. So we use it in our industry like the equity market uses S&amp;P 500 and Dow Jones Industrials to monitor trends. And the gray area represents the federal funds rate, just to give you an idea of what Federal Reserve policy was at the time of the interest rate movement. So the takeaway I want to give you from this chart is just to look at the far right side where you see those four different lines and look across to the left. And you can see that rates are near historic lows. We have almost 20 years worth of data here, but if you had the data that went before this, it would show the same thing. The rates are even lower than they were prior to the data on the left-hand side. This next slide presents the same data set, but just from the beginning of the year so you can see more vividly what has been occurring so far this year. We reached a historic low on these indexes, or on this index, in early March. And then you can see that rates went up very quickly as the pandemic was setting in and quite frankly, panic was occurring everywhere in the economy in the United States and across the world. And we saw interest rates go up over two percentage points in a little more than a week. Stability started to return, though, as Congress passed various bills and the Federal Reserve created programs to help prop up markets and to provide liquidity for those markets. They even made one platform that never existed before for the municipal bond market. By the time we got to middle May, the market really began to stabilize. And you can see since that time, it's gone up and down some, but it's been very stable. A lot of bonds, this is a record year for municipal bonds, more bonds sold this year than any other year, which if you'd asked me if that was going to happen in March, I would have told you you're wrong. So while we're not at those all-time lows that were reached in August, we're very close to those lows right now. So this is just an overview of the district's outstanding debt. Right here, you have some principal by series. Most of your outstanding debt are called general obligation bonds, meaning that they're paid from a separate property tax levy. You do have two different types of certificates. You have the lease certificates and the debt certificates. Those are both the last two financings on the far right there. Those lease certificates were issued for the new elementary building that's under construction. And then the debt certificates refinanced some outstanding obligations that you had. Tony and I actually began a conversation with, talking about the interest rates being as low as they are. Is there an opportunity to refinance some of the district's bonds? And at the bottom of each column, we have the call date. That's the day at which the old bonds can be refinanced and paid off. So your next call date's not to January 1st of '23. But even when we get closer to those call dates, the amount of principal that's callable is substantially lower than what we've refinanced in the past. The bulk of the district's refinancing was done in the last two to three years when you locked in millions of dollars with the savings. So after that discussion about refunding opportunities, we talked about the potential to maybe finance capital, as Tony alluded to. And this graphical graphic that you see here is a graph of the debt service extension base. We sometimes call it the DSub. And the reason why we present this here is this is a constraint that was created as part of the tax cap law that limits the annual payment on the type of GO bonds that you can do on a non-referendum basis. And that red line represents your current DSub. So your annual payment on your non-referendum bonds cannot exceed that. Within that constraint and 20-year timeframe is the limitations that the state provides on you in doing non-referendum borrowing. The dash line there represents what your DSub could be over time because it is tied to CPI. So its constraint is not fixed. It does go up every year by whatever CPI is. So levy year '20 was tied to CPI that came out in January this year as 2.3. Levvy year '21, so far, we assumed a 1%. That's trending slightly below what's been trending. Year-to-date, for the first 11 months, it's been 1.3%. So with this backdrop, with this constraint that we have to deal with is how we look at potentially doing new money financings. And then we just want to take one look at all the district's debt service. And because this includes your referendum bonds in this graph, and the blue lines at the bottom, or blue bars, I mean, at the bottom represent the same non-referendum payments. So you see substantially most of your debt service was authorized originally by referendum. That's represented by the green bars. And so you can see a couple of things to take away from this chart is you don't have too many years left of your referendum debt service. The current levy for that is just under $30 million per year. You do have a couple of distinct You do have a couple of distinct drop-offs in there. One coming up in levy year 21 and the next one in levy year 26. Your bonds were intentionally structured this way to give you the flexibility to be able to do these types of non-referendum financings that we're presenting to you today with minimal to no tax increase. And those were, this structure was implemented when we did the refunding. So not only did we lock in savings, we locked in a type of structure that provided the flexibility to the district to to do this type of non-referendum borrowing at this time. So here's a scenario where we show if the district were to borrow $5 million, $5 million at one time, we would amortize it to be able to pay it off in about a 10-year timeframe. That was another goal that when we did the refundings was to try to put the district in a position where it might be able to do their non-referendum, your non-referendum borrowings in the future with a shorter payback period. The last time you did non-referendum borrowing was almost a 15-year payback. So you can see this one would be considerably shorter, about nine to 10 years. And you'll notice that there's a, we don't go right up against the red line for all the years. We create a decrease again in year 2024. You see that it goes down from one bar to the next. That would give you the flexibility. If you need to borrow again, you could do so at that time. So I think Tony has said that, you know, this would probably replace one year's worth of capital projects if you were to shift them towards borrowing. If you wanted to do, oh, I'm sorry, before I go to the next scenario, this just shows you the impact on the overall debt levy of the district. So again, you have that big increase coming up here soon or decrease coming up here soon that this would then factor into the overall structure. This is just a detail. If you're somebody who likes to get into the nuts and bolts of it, so this is what just feeds into the graphs. So I'm not going to cover this. But I do want to spend some time here showing you the 10-year financing. The 10-year financing, excuse me, not the 10-year, but the $10 million financing would provide for capital projects for the two-year time period, hopefully get you through this period of COVID. And the payback period is a little longer, obviously, than the five-year. I did talk about finance, how we have a pretty substantial decline from 29 to 30. Probably could shorten this up a bit by a couple of years, so maybe it'll only go up 12 or 13. But we still, again, have that decrease from 23 to 24 built into the structure, which will again give you the flexibility. Because it's oftentimes a concern that comes through, comes about in these meetings. Okay, if we borrow $5 million, if we borrow $10 million now, when could we tap into this again if we needed to? So these are done in such a way that will give you flexibility to access this borrowing flexibility again in three years. This is the graph showing you the overall impact to your debt service structure. And again, this is the detail that goes into that. The last thing I have to present here is if the board, the committee and ultimately the board is interested in doing this financing, this is really the fastest that you could proceed, is what we're showing you here. So I'll go over these dates, but I'll also go over some of these procedural requirements that you need to do. On January 11th, the board would pass a resolution called the Notice and Intent Resolution that declares your intent to issue bonds in an amount not to exceed X, whether that's 5 million or 10 million. Also that night, the president would sign an order calling for a BINA hearing. BINA stands for Bond Issue Notification Act. Both of those documents are published in the paper. So these are separate requirements. You're required to hold a hearing and this hearing is conducted very similarly to your budget hearing. You've done these in the past. The last time you did one of these non-referendum bonds, which I think was in 16 or 17. And we contemplate that the hearing would be held at the January 25th meeting. When that petition, when the Notice and Intent Resolution, when it's published in the paper, it starts a 30-day clock in which if 10% or more of the registered voters of the district sign that petition, then that this bond issue would have to go to referendum before it could be sold. Without, if there is no petition filed, that 30-day period would end around February 12th. It's not common that these petitions are circulated. I've been doing this over 20 years and my clients have had, and all that time have had two successful petitions against them. We would have to get these rated, which would occur in February. Again, this is the fastest timeline we could follow. And the district's current credit rating is AA2 by Moody's, which is their third highest credit rating. The next action by the board, so the board would have three different times that had, would have to take consideration for this bond issue. But that last action item would be on February 22nd. And that's when you'd actually approve a resolution to sell the bonds. And around that same day is when we anticipate, or we would then be selling the bonds the next day, at which time the rate would finally be locked in and set. And then about approximately three weeks later is when the bonds would close. And on the closing date is when you receive the proceeds of the bonds. So that's the sum of the presentation. I'll take any questions that you might have right now.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate your time sharing that with us and being here to join us tonight. Dave, this is your committee. So I mean, I'll turn it over to you, you know, just if you have any questions or want to, you know, continue to lead this through.
No, I think it's, it's something that with the interest rates being the way they are, there are capital projects that have to be done. There was money that was spent on the COVID expenses that is taking away money from both the classroom and these capital projects. So this does give us an option that I think the seven of us can discuss to possibly take advantage of the interest rates and to continue our focus, not only in the classroom, but also taking care of these projects that just have to be done at these schools and to keep them running efficiently as they are. So I don't know if Rod has any questions or that. I think it's something that we have to look at, something that we have to discuss.
Yep, I agree.
So Bob, thank you. Thank you. And Tony, thank you for bringing this to our, to the committee's attention. And, you know, this is, this is a viable option.
Thanks, Dave. Any other questions from the board for Bob or Tony? While we're here tonight, certainly an opportunity to, you know, ask any questions as we go forward over the next couple of few weeks prior to, again, based on the timeline, you know, at least prior to the January 11th board meeting would be the next time that we would, you know, possibly be acting on this. So any other questions for Bob or Tony while they're here?
Yeah, can I ask, are we restructuring to take advantage of low interest rates, number one? And number two, if we choose not to do this, I'm not sure I quite followed. Are we losing some bonding capacity for the future?
I'll let you talk about the bonding capacity and then I'll talk about the capital project capacity when we're done.
Sure. Yeah, there's no restructuring with this. None of the other, our same bonds are being refinanced. They're not eligible for it at this time. And you're not really, I wouldn't say you're, if you don't do it this time, you're not really losing any capacity from that standpoint. If you didn't do it now, you can still do it later. It's not like PTAL, for instance, on the operating side. If you don't take the increase, it sort of compounds for it. It doesn't function the same way on the debt side.
So the primary purpose then is to help with the budget constraints we may be having coming?
Yes, what it would do for us and, because I know I just kind of gave a brief overview of it here. And then really quick here, I'm going to stop sharing my screens so we can see everybody. Sorry about that. In working on our latest look at our five-year capital plan with meeting with Mr. Paul Gonzalez here, normally we see a pretty balanced approach, a similar number, somewhere between four, five, six million dollars a year in capital projects. In order to move the payment that we put into Fund 60 from educational-based funding into the Ed Fund, which would basically keep this budget impact as little as possible on the classroom, which was the first goal that we had. Paul looked at it and cut the, that normal plan down from, you know, the four to six million to, it came out to about $465,000, because that's what we could afford to do. The problem there is we looked at a ramp where we'd have $460,000 of work next year. We're back to about $4.5 million the second year. In year three, it goes up to 15 million because now we're trying to play catch-up with all the work that had been postponed from the last couple of years. And that still left other projects that we know will need to be completed, some being after this five-year plan. Some just depends on the, kind of the lifespan of some equipment that we have. So this allows us to stay proactive and balanced by doing this, really a cost-effective time with where interest rates are at. Basically, it keeps as much money in the classroom as we can have while also keeping the buildings as safe as we can make them for when students return. Mike, you good? Any other questions then for Tony or Bob tonight? All right, well, again, if there are questions, as you know, you review, you know, the full presentation and information is available. Board members packets from the committee meetings, the last Wednesday night from the Site and Finance Committee meeting. If anyone has any questions on any of that for Tony, you know, the next couple, feel free to reach out to him. And then, you know, we'll discuss our next steps going forward in January. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate your time tonight.
You're welcome.
All right, one quick thing. I just wanted to circle back on one piece related to 13.03, the Return 2021 Plan. You know, I think Mina did such a great job of focusing significant attention on the CDC guidance and that related metric, so to speak. But I did just want to, one of the things that we had been talking about in, you know, many other presentations about the return plan were the series of metrics that we have been looking at since the summer in terms of our return. And I just wanted to draw everyone's attention back to those more in the community side than the board side. I know the board knows these really by heart, but, you know, there were, there were five metrics that we've been tracking. One, COVID-19 risk metrics, cases by county and region and looking at, you know, five consecutive data points trending down or flat. Secondly, was the amount of cleaning and disinfecting supplies that are readily available and able to be refilled in a timely manner, meaning that our supply chains were sufficient to keep us going, you know, with, with operations for the entire school year. Three was PPE supplies readily available and able to be refilled in a timely manner, again, also related to supply chain questions and concerns. Fourth was our substitute pool is greater than or equal to the number of substitutes needed for in-person learning as we define that based on any standard academic year. And then five, consistent guidance from IDPH, ISB, CDC and local county health departments. So again, those were the metrics that we have been looking at, continue to look at since the beginning as we track back in time to the late summer and beginning of the school year. While, you know, the, certainly the overall COVID metrics might have been and were substantially less than they are now, many of those other metrics that we were looking at were not where they needed to be for us to be able to open schools and maintain consistency and continuity of that for the entire school year, specifically the cleaning and disinfecting supplies. We did not have sufficient quantities available to us despite ordering those back even before the end of last school year and continuing over the summer. Amount of PPE supplies readily available, same thing. Substitute pool not being at the level necessary. And then, again, even consistent guidance from IDPH, ISB, CDC and local county and health departments was also really anything but consistent, you know, as we track back to the summer and the beginning of the school year. So I just wanted to make that point again because I think, you know, I didn't want to get everyone focused exclusively on just the metrics related to positivity rates and what the CDC has to say, but rather that bigger picture of, you know, all of the metrics that we have been tracking. And again, why even though one metric may have looked better at the beginning of the school year than it does now, why we didn't move fully to an in-person model at the beginning of the school year, made the decisions that we made at that point in time. So for what it's
Can I add something really important for the community to be aware of? The Illinois IDPH actually changed the level at which a county is considered in warning. So back at the beginning of the year in August, the warning level for the positivity rate was set at 8%. So back in August, when we made the decision to go remote, we were actually in warning at the positivity rate because the, the level of warning was at 8%. Currently, they've actually raised the bar and now the level of warning is considered 12%. So it's important to know that the data that we were considering at the time and the recommendations that we were considering at the time were different than they are currently. So, you know, we talk about consistent recommendations from the CDC and IDPH and the counties. Those continue to change. And so back when we made these decisions, we were considered at warning at that time. If we had those numbers currently, we wouldn't be because now they've raised the percentage rate where it's considered to be warning to 12%. So it's really important for everyone to understand that the levels of warning have changed as we've moved through this pandemic.
Thank you, Mina. Again, appreciate the level of detail that you're always on top of. And again, anything else, Lane, from, from your perspective on that? Again, I just wanted to share a little bit more detail.
On that, on the Return 2021 Plan.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, we have no unfinished business. We have no new business. So moving on down to item 16.01, Freedom of Information Request status, Dr. April.
We have received two Freedom of Information requests since last Board of Education meeting. One from a Timothy Oliver from Sycamore Learning Company for materials regarding student contact information. Received November 30th due December 7, completed November 30. Secondly, a request from Joanne Barrera, in-house counsel for the Chicago Laborers District Council for vendor work records. Received December 4, due December 11, completed December 10.
Thank you, sir. 17.01, Announcements and Scheduled Activities.
Yes, and before announcing those, I just do want to make one more reminder on the information that was presented tonight on the 2021 Return Plan. That will all be posted on our website by Mr. Hernandez. That would include my report as well as the information presented by Mrs. Griffin. So moving on, announcements of scheduled activities. We have winter break, December 21, 2020 through January 1, 2021. Remote classes will begin on Monday, January 4 of 2021. Next Board of Education meeting will be held remotely on Monday, January 11, 2021. 6:30 for first closed session, 7:30 for public session.
Thank you, sir. We will not have a second closed session this evening, so I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Bob? A second?
Second.
Mike? Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook? Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Drake? And Mr. Herbert?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much and have a wonderful evening.